Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board Meeting for April 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, just make sure you get the alternates or something in there.
All right, we gotta designate two alternates tonight. One will be Adam Brock and the other will be Chelsea Canyon. We're gonna table the minutes.
Yes, till next.
Make a motion, retable the minutes?
Till the next meeting. All opposed?
We'll just take them home and just review them so that way. It's because they're so lengthy.
All right, we'll get into old business. Jason Roy coming in at 63 Stonewall Drive, map 127, lot 004. Application for greatest practical extent. Does it go on? Just that here, sidewalk. Jason, we getting rid of this old expansion?
Oh, yes, please. There was an updated one where he removed the garage from his calculation sheet. And just is gonna go with the house because the garage did, it didn't trigger greatest practical extent, but it did use the volume calculations when he did his roof system. That was, that application was put in with the last, one of the last code officers and approved, but they never filled out a expansion form for that, so. Anyway, so we decided, and he decided best just take it off so there's no confusion. He'll just work with the numbers from the house and patios and whatever structures that is allowed. So he modified it for the board. And again, these are just numbers for the board to review. He's trying to, what his determination before he even figures out what he's gonna do is where the board is gonna wanna put them, put him, or put the structure for greatest practical extent.
Do you wanna talk about that one side you thought, Adam? Well, shifting it over.
So, Jason, it is your intent that you do want to move that where the building footprint is? You wanna move it to?
I've never had that, I've never had the property line surveyed.
Yep.
I have a feeling it's encroaching, if not right on the line.
Yep.
So to come into current setback requirements, I think it might have to move five feet possibly. We might have to reconfigure the shape of the structure a little bit to make that work. But it needs to be conforming with the current setbacks.
Jason, is it a five foot or a 10 foot setback on the side?
So he won't meet his, he probably won't be able to meet it, which he's still, he doesn't have to meet it because where it's located right now, but they always try to make it more, more conforming and not, less conforming. He, where he has two acres, how much shore fund did you have?
Two hundred, so it's still under 250.
Okay, so he's still at a non-conforming lot, so it is 10 feet for conforming.
So.
On the side.
So if he goes over 10, he's gonna lose what you wanted to keep on the other side, correct?
Potentially.
Yeah, we cut into a septic tank.
I'm gonna keep, I believe by code eight feet off the tank, and right now it's 16 feet, so there's a little bit of shifting that I can do to make the setbacks work. To make it more conforming.
When you have your septic system redesigned and added to.
As far as the leach field side of it.
Yeah, what, I think you might get a different tank anyway.
I believe the tank will stay. The leach field's up quite a bit higher in elevation, so they'd add, they'd add a chamber or two. The tank is sufficient in size.
But I mean, when you move your house, if you wanna meet the 10 feet.
I believe the tank, I believe the tank will still be in an adequate place not to touch it.
So you think it'll still be eight feet away?
Because I could change the structure width. Say if the house, off the top of my head, is 66 feet.
So you're gonna just make that happen?
We might have to just adjust it to 60 feet to make the number work. We haven't picked out a specific design at this point. Just trying to figure out the length away from the water and what we can fit on the property to make it work at this point.
So who designed it before? Are you gonna go back to that same person?
I'm not sure.
Ken Gardner?
Ken Gardner, yeah, I remember that.
Assuming he's still in business.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, he's definitely still running around.
And then you said you wanted to go back?
I proposed five feet back, but as I mentioned in the sidewalk, it could be up to 15 feet back would still work with the current driveway situation and power.
If you were to do 10 on the side and 10 in the front?
That would be, to make that work. I'm not, like I said, I'm not sure exactly where that property line is, but staying off of that property line by 10 feet, not to encroach on my neighbor.
If you move it back 10 feet, it almost cut that little slope out of your walk.
Exactly, yeah. It would keep the existing cellar hole and not have to basically do any more excavation of the property than need be.
Right.
I'm gonna depend on you for a lot of coverage. Are you good with that?
Yeah. Jay, what was the acreage you had on that?
It's 2.02 acres. Like I mentioned, I do have another 5.39 acres behind that I could theoretically move to this property if need be, but I still feel that I'm believing in 20% allowed.
Make a motion? You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I make a motion that we accept the application for the greatest practical extent for Jason and Jessica Roy at 63 Stonewall Drive. With the condition that they move it back 10 feet and away from the property line 10 feet. Is that good enough? Jason?
Yeah?
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
All in favor? All opposed?
So we're going 47 feet from the high watermark?
Yes.
I think, I think you should. I remember, I remember doing this before and it was the, it was the closest water line.
We have, but the only measurement I have on this plot plan is from.
The wall.
The wall.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna continue to use that because.
Okay.
We'd have to use, we'd have to go out and get another measurement.
Okay.
And I know where it is and I'll document, I'm gonna put this, put it on here.
I just remember we did that before.
So what I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say we're no closer than 47 feet from the.
That's how I should have ordered it.
It work?
Works well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else I need for this evening?
No, just go, you can, you can figure out what you wanna do. And then come to me.
Alright. It's two years to pull a building permit, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, next up, Andrew Donovan, 2557, Route 109, map 243, lot 005. Application for continual, conditional use for ground mounted solar arrays.
Morning or afternoon?
If you just wanna tell us a little about it?
Yep, well, we did the sidewalk last week. Basically, you saw where it was gonna be. It's on the other side of the gate and it's pretty far from the roadway. You really can't see it. It's 60 feet by, I believe, 13 feet. It'll be standable about 10 feet above the ground and it'll face to the south southwest, or south southwest, yeah, south southeast. And it's 32 panels.
Oh, you're more specific.
I didn't make the sidewalk.
I didn't either, but.
I did.
But I did see, I did see the video and I'm kinda familiar with the layout there.
Yeah, me too.
It's pretty benign.
Yep.
So just to remind the board, where it's conditional use, we still be needing to do a public hearing. And you, go over the fine, whatever the checklist and the conditional use. Before, you know.
Which I don't have, but you have in the book.
Checklist?
Yeah.
I got it right here. Anyways, right?
Yeah, so we have to go through that. I can read if you, if you would like.
Yeah.
Can you guys look at this one?
Ah, that's the conditional use. Yeah, it's the same thing. The green.
We missing one?
Yeah, this is the same thing.
Just newer version.
4.3, 0.2. Yeah, it's the green. So Shoreland District Conditional Use is the proposed use is stated in the Land Use Chart Section 2.7 as a conditional use.
You said shoreline?
No, it's not shoreline.
Just the conditional use one?
6.6, 6.6.3, I think we're.
It's just the second paragraph down that same page.
It's been a long day.
Okay, conditional use permit, existing conditional use or structure if the use existed prior to effective date of the ordinance, the proposed use does not change the original use.
So residential.
The proposed use does not substantially expand or alter the original use defined as an increase in an area of 25% or more, where new materials or processes not previously associated with the existing use. A signed application has been submitted. Plans presented for approval are drawn at a scale not smaller than one inch equals 50 feet. Just stop me if you would like me to stop.
Yeah, hold on a second, Pat. I think we're still reading the wrong section. You're reading 6.6, 6.3.7?
3.2. There is no 7.
It was, it was in their original, part of their application.
I have it right here.
Yeah. 6.6.3.7, standards applicable to conditional uses.
Okay, okay, let's try to do this right now. 6.6.3.7, standards applicable to conditional uses. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed use meets all the following criteria. The board shall approve the application unless it makes written findings that one or more of these criteria have not been met. The use will not have an adverse effect, impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in the ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance of the standards in the ordinance. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous material has been made. A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Adequate provision to control soil erosion and sediment have been made. There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. The provision for the buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. That's our list.
Jason, one quick question. Is there any? For private homeowners or for private individuals, any responsibility for reclamation of the panels or anything like that, like we have with the bigger solar arrays?
As of right now, we don't really have anything like that in our ordinance for solar until, if something gets passed in June. So it was, because of that, the one on the H road was such a large site plan, they did, were able to use that under site plan review. And there says it's a conditional use, so you do have the ability to do that, but there's nothing in our ordinance that actually states that it has to be done.
We could make it a condition.
Yeah.
I would recommend that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That's my, that's my only concern that I can see.
Yeah.
Whether it be the. Whether it be after the landowner or whoever is the installer or whatever. I'm not sure where that would.
I will, I will look into that and see how that's been, because this is my first one for just a personal solar array, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a little bit of digging and I'll have an answer for you guys during the public hearing if we schedule one tonight.
Okay.
What are you gonna do with the, because it came up, you, I don't think you were here for this one either. Concerned about underneath the solar panels, you gonna mow it underneath or leave it just natural?
Probably mow it, I mean, just to keep it down, keep it in control. It's a field, so it does grow, but it only grows about three feet. And then with, probably with the shade, it won't grow as well, but we'll probably just weed whack around the poles and mow underneath it.
Okay. That was a big thing with.
It was.
Birds and stuff, you know, taking the natural habitat away from the bird and stuff.
It was the time of the year for, for mowing, like if you did it a couple of times a year to allow.
Pretty much mow like we do the fields.
The livestock.
Twice a year.
Yeah.
Wildlife to breed and so forth.
It's currently being mowed.
It's just a small, it's thirty panels.
Window that the birds breed in.
You wanna schedule a public hearing?
We can. What's the timeline that you're gonna need to know?
Yeah, this is one of those situations where it's just.
We have to bump it to the 18th?
Unfortunately, yeah, I have to. Not that I want to, but I, our ordinance has to, I have to run it 14 days in circulation, so that puts me, I have, they don't, they only run it on Thursdays, so.
You won't be able to get in contact with the paper until when?
It'll run next Thursday, so it'll meet the 18th.
Right.
But it just won't meet the 4th, because I think our next meeting's on the 4th.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, it's just a time restriction. We're trying to change it, but that's coming in June. Hopefully.
Or 18?
Yeah.
I mean, 518?
Same six o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you guys want, I just wanna check off this list. I know, we read through the conditions, but I'm trying to just fill out. Like, yes, no, or not applicable. So it is in the, it is in the book. It's just for some reason, it's 6.6.3.4 and it's. It just says, in small writing, it was 6.37, but it just got shifted to something different. So I have, just, I know we read them already. A was, the use will not have any adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife habitat. Your options are yes, no, or not applicable.
Not applicable. Right?
No, it's applicable.
Yeah, I would say no.
I'd say no. B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies?
NA.
That's an NA. C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in the, in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance.
NA.
NA.
Yep. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations?
NA.
I'm gonna.
If you get a flood up that high, we're all underwater.
So it is in conformance. So it's not NA, it's yes. Adequate, adequate provisions for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made?
Well, that's the part, the condition.
I guess that's the, that was part of the question that I was asking as far as at the, you know, at the end of the lifetime of the panels.
Who's disposing it?
So I'll get an answer for this one for you, okay? And then adequate provisions for transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. I think that goes with.
Same thing.
The same thing.
Yeah.
Stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
NA.
NA.
Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
Are they gonna be digging and putting in footings or anything like?
They're just gonna be putting Helix-type screws.
Okay.
So yes.
There is no adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes?
There is.
The pond right there.
Saying no.
So there is, so yes, there is adequate supply. Provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like?
Yes.
All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met?
Well, we just have F and G, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll leave that empty for now. Archaeological and historical resources as designed in the comprehensive plan will be protected. So this house is not, it's an older, it's an older barn, but it was never put into historic preservation.
Well, if you haven't defined something when you're, we know that you will be responsible.
If it was put in historic, they wouldn't be doing, they wouldn't rebuild, build the.
Rebuild the house, yeah.
Just from the previous times, John and Gavin went through, I think this is actually supposed to be yes, did the way it's worded for A.
Oh, it will not, yes, you are right. So Dave is just pointing out that A needs to be yes, not no. The use will not have, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, adequate life, birds, or other wildlife.
Yes.
It is yes, so thank you for pointing it out. So I think the board has decided to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, on May 8th.
May 18th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So what we, I, what we do is we notify all the butters to your property within a 500 radius.
Okay.
And then it goes through the newspaper, so we need that time to be able to notify everybody and follow the ordinance.
Okay.
And, yeah. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 18th.
Okay.
Yeah, I just happened to, John and Gavin going back for that one, previous.
So next, what, I'm just gonna shut this off for a second.
And you read one of them wrong too, both of adequate water.
Well, you could have read it yourself.
They'll just let you know. Correct me, correct me.
So we had a public eating, a public hearing last week. Some of you were here, some more. There is a change that we were missing from the mineral extraction ordinance. If you wanna just open it up, there's a red section in there. I don't know how, it was in there, but then I somehow, somehow it got taken out or just got forgotten. I just wanted, was hoping for you guys to review it and see if, oh, it's not red. It's, it's 15 under, under.
Sorry, a couple of your copies aren't red, I just reused ones.
So it's gonna be 15 under the. Standards? Of page four or five, correct, thank you. And it was pretty much just almost a cut and paste from the solar. You not have it?
I can share.
It states owner operators will provide proof of renewed surety for reclamation in the form of letter of credit or bond on an annual basis to the code enforcement office. The reclamation surety shall be kept in effect throughout the lifetime of the operation until 100% of the reclamation has been completed and signed off on by the code enforcement officer. The amount of the financial surety will be reviewed by the planning board or designate every 10 years and adjusted as necessary. The sum of financial surety required for the reclamation shall be equivalent to the amount of open acreage approved by the planning board. The financial, financial surety will. The financial, financial surety will be returned once the site has been fully revegetated and stabilized as enforced by the code enforcement office. So I didn't know if you guys had any questions or comments on that one and, um. Yeah?
That's what they asked us to change it to.
So, um, like I said, it, what, it was, I feel like it was in there at one point, but then it wasn't in there and then, um. That was really one of the main reasons why this ordinance was being put into place was to make sure that surety was being provided to the town.
And to not make it a financial burden on the applicant.
Correct, and so yes, this takes the cash escrow out of it and just leaves it to a letter of credit and a bond. Uh, if you guys wanna. Can I have the ordinance? So with zoning amendments, we have different schedules to hit. And I think anytime it's amended, you need to re-hold a public hearing again. And I don't really know if it does, but I'm just trying to read it right now quickly. It doesn't, it actually doesn't state if I have to hold another one or not.
Thank you.
My concern would be just, um, if there's any more modifications that wanna, if anybody wants to be made. Some of the comments that were made at the public hearing were for clarity, um, by some of the, um. Industry operators, I guess, if you wanna put it that way. Uh, there's a bullet point in there too about, um.
I'm not sure if I got it.
What some of the things were. And so these are just questions, you guys can have this, uh, discussion on it, if you just wanna do anything with it, you can, if not, um. And that's fine. Um, so if we say the, go over the first one, oh, look, oh, the grandfathering one.
First one's the top soil.
Top soil, but that's, I'm not adding, I'm not adding another article, cause that's a definition and, um.
I, I think that that's clear anyway, I think we talked about that, I think that he was, he was good with that, so.
Clarify the language around grandfathering existing operations.
I think that's a can of worms. I don't think that's necessary, personally.
Yeah, clarify language around what is considered compliance to avoid the ninety day time limit before a stop work order. That was, this, that one can be changed, that was more of less, as long as they come up with a plan, you know, as long as they come up with a plan with the code office. Or, or permitting entity, whatever, to remedy the situation, then they're in compliance, as long as they're moving to be in compliance.
Do you wanna go right to the language and try to, try to do that right now, or?
I mean, that's up to you guys.
I think it's pretty simple.
Yep.
I think that one's important, I think it's a good point.
It'd be in the three C, right?
Can you put it up here?
I gotta go down and get a zip drive.
Well, just read it and.
We're just gonna, I'm gonna, I wanna make a change now with you guys here.
Perfect. Do you want this copy, Pat? Wanna read it?
He gets back here, I'm gonna.
You're talking about three, three C on page five, correct?
Uh, yes.
I like it blocking me. I don't like that.
Probably wanted by the FBI or something. Yeah?
Not gonna announce it on video, yeah.
See, I was trying to trap him.
Get that reward?
Yeah.
Glass of water.
Something in my throat.
Smell it, smell it and be sure it's walking.
I think it's downstairs, I was like.
Alright, so let's see.
I have those two. Are we gonna put it in wood C or?
I'm just gonna change it. Let me just make sure I have the right one here. No.
No, go to, uh, page five. It's the old folder, I'll show you where it is. Six draft proposal up top. Should be.
Okay, so, let's see. What was that one?
Page five.
Page five, the last page. Three C.
Alright, failure to comply with the remedial actions required by the code enforcement officer will report within ninety day, well, officers' report within ninety days from the date thereof will result in a stop work order.
So if you, um, after actions, insert beginning with a letter of intent and then put as required by the code enforcement officer's report. That's just a suggestion, I don't know if anybody.
Be complying with the remedial actions.
Beginning with a letter of intent. Because that's what you said, that would, would be all that was needed.
Required by the code enforcement.
As after that. As required by the code enforcement officer's report within ninety days, I think.
That makes sense.
That would work.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, next.
It is a long sentence, if we make changes, this is, I have to go back to the lawyer to review it.
It's a long sentence.
Or, no. No.
Way to break it, it's like our huge run on sentence.
Period.
If within ninety days. Or no, no, not if.
Who's the English teacher here?
Not me, buddy.
I'll put a, or after thereof, instead of a comma, I can just break it there and.
No action will result in stop work order. After a period of that, you can put, you can start the next sentence with no action.
Um, because then it falls onto, if you read onto that sentence, it kinda loses it.
This.
Yeah, so failure to comply will result in a stop work order.
There.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Uh, so he, the next one was about the stormwater management plans, he's, the expense that it is on the operator or the owner. Um, and it should be, he felt that it only should be required on large projects, not some of these.
But isn't, isn't D E P going to make that determination?
Yeah, I'm not really sure how that goes, I'm pretty new to the whole. And some won't need it if it's, I think if it's internally draining.
Does anybody know what number that is?
I'm looking for it right now myself.
Oh, nope, nope.
It's number twelve on page four. But that just says that are not internally drained.
Alright, I.
Which makes sense.
Yeah. Next one was he wanted to clarify the type of monitoring wells, uh, would be required, PVC metal casings, et cetera, um, because some of the pits, um. Most of the pits have PVC monitoring wells, um.
Didn't even mention that he wasn't sure if they could measure the PVC pipes.
No.
I think he did.
He mentioned something about the survey or anything.
No, well.
Don't mess with my memory scan.
Yeah, I don't trust your memory.
Well, Dave's my backup tonight.
I don't trust my old memory.
But if something quirky like that, they weren't sure if they could measure inside it cause of the PVC or something, I don't know, there was something odd like that.
I'll find out, I'll get some.
Made the distinction, yeah, I think.
He did.
An engineer, it, it had to do with the, the money and the engineer. If we just put PVC, that would just make it really simple.
Well, I'd rather, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just say PVC, I, I just don't, I don't even know if it needs to be clarified, it's on the, what the, cause sometimes you have a critical area. You're gonna want more in depth, you might want more testing, you might want, you know, if he's right next to, you know, uh, yeah, critical area, you might wanna check for, um, have them check for pollution in the water, groundwater table or something like that, so.
So leave that one alone?
The, you know, Mister, the applicant that was in front of us voluntarily already had how many monitoring wells installed before he even came to the planning board.
Right.
So, uh, it was the expense that would, if you had, uh, you know, a twenty acre operation, every five acres or whatever it was, he just felt that to have it monitored, drilled, drilled and monitored just could get it costly. I think that was one of his major concerns. And, you know, I, I understand what he's saying, but I think sometimes this is a case by case situation. So if you go and clar, if you go and really put it, this is what you need. It could be really.
Setting yourself up for something that you don't know might be coming down the pike. Okay.
Another comment was that, um, they did not agree about the additional wetland setbacks, um.
What additional wetlands?
So if it's not mapped as an, if it's not mapped as an additional wetland, like if it doesn't come up as a wetland on the map and it doesn't have that buffer, you know, like that small quarter acre, um, wetland that they had, didn't actually have a buffer on it, so the planning board and the applicant worked together to instill a twenty-five foot buffer, he doesn't feel that that should be necessary.
I think that was based on the reports of the biologist.
We just followed the graph that was in the ordinance from before, we just added something below it to, I don't know, I, I. Tit for tat, it's.
He's, and it's, the board didn't push him back a hundred feet.
I mean, I think it just helps those small areas that pop up. That's in the ordinance, we just added.
I don't think we did the wrong thing.
No.
Um, and then this other one kinda goes on with grandfathered and existing, it kinda ties in with the, uh, first, this first one, to clarify language around grandfathering existing operations, um, you know, like. Where some of these are old, you know, um.
Well, that's the whole point of the ordinance. To bring everybody on the same page.
You guys got that?
Yep.
Gonna vote on the, on the changes.
Motion on the changes.
Make a motion that, uh, we, uh, accept the changes on the, uh, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to the mineral extractive industry.
A second?
All in favor? All opposed?
And I will find out, um, if the board is required or has to hold another public hearing, we've already had one. There wasn't a lot of changes, so might not have to have one, but I will have an answer for that one, um. I don't think we need to, I think we just have to have one prior to thirty days. I think that's all I have for you guys.
No word on that pending? Uh, did you hear?
No, nothing, I'm gonna actually just reach out to her, um, for the next meeting, I'm gonna reach out to her probably tomorrow. I've talked, my office had talked about sending her an email to see where she's in with it, she was pretty adamant about moving forward with it, but she, she knows what the board was looking for, um, assuming she just hasn't, hasn't done it yet. So I'll reach out to her and see where she stands on that, if she's even moving forward with it, I think that she is, but I just haven't heard from her.
You take a lot of stuff.
So we're good? New one? And make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Alright, thank you.